I'm going to bring this meeting to order. Today's date is July 11th, 2024. This is a meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're at the City Hall in Greenfield, Massachusetts. It's 6:31 PM. I'm about to make a chair statement. I'm David Singer. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me, the Chairperson, at this time. Anybody recording this meeting? No pressing. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20-G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the Chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the Chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the Chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the Chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the Chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. Okay, we have three public hearings tonight. Clerk Pro Temp, would you please read the first application?
Sure. Application of Greenfield Primary Care, DVA Bridge Primary for property located at 55 Federal Streets, units 210, 220, 225, 250, and 290, assessors map 56, lot 11, units 210, 220, 225, 250, and 290, which is located in the Central Commercial CC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-8.3, and 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a medical center/clinic at this location.
Okay, is the applicant here? Can you come up and make a presentation? Tell it to you are. Can we all just come up? Why don't you wrap around this way? Your chair. You can also...
It's right here?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Sure.
It's not the best set.
All right.
We do our best.
We work.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so...
Do you want me to start?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I need to know what you're doing, why you're doing it, where you're doing it. I need to know names, addresses, your association with the applicant. So are you the spokesperson?
Sure, I can start. Well, the three of us are co-owners. My name is Dean Singer.
And Deanna Welch.
We currently operate in a private, independent, primary care medical practice at One Arch Place, and we are in the process of buying these spaces, as you read out, at 55 Federal Street with the goal of running a primary care medical clinic and expanding our current operations.
And what's in the space now?
Currently, the spaces are empty. It's the former Pioneer Spine and Sports Medical Office, the USDA Medical Office that just... They just vacated, and there's a small law office that get owners that's in one of the units. And so we're basically taking over. We're going to do an upgrade and expansion to turn it into a larger medical clinic so we can service more patients.
What kind of services will we be there?
Just basically full-spectrum primary care medical services. So I don't know. Do you want more details of what that entails?
Is it more like Valley Medical kind of care? Or is it specialized care?
No, it's similar. Valley Medical is a multi-specialty. We are just focusing on basically primary care. So 80 to however old you can live. Basically, all ages. All ages, primary care, general practitioner service, where we essentially are providing, for the most part, and, you know, advice-based medical service and referrals with some in-house, you know, procedures just based on our individual training. But yes, similar to kind of what Valley Medical and the Community Health Center, the CFC, and then Greenfield General Medicine, similar to all of what they're doing.
And how many people will be working there?
When we start, there will be approximately 18 employees. And then we plan on expanding. And so within the five years, we hope to be somewhere in the mid-20s of employees.
That would be the maximum?
No, not necessarily. We may get as big as probably like 30 employees. I highly doubt we would get more than 30 employees in that space. And it's, yeah, 6,500 square feet. So it's basically double or more than double our current space now. And we currently have 17 employees in our current space of only 3,300 square feet.
I got for us. Oh, I forgot. Members of the board sitting are Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
Jim Winn.
Eric Green.
David Singer. Okay, for the five of us, you know, what changes you're making? What, this is on the basement floor or the ground level?
The second floor.
Oh, the ground level. I think there's one floor up, isn't there?
Yeah, there is. So...
It's not the basement floor. It's second to the first floor.
Yeah.
It's the first floor.
And you're going to enter it from the Franklin Street side, right? That's where your step is on that?
Well, there, you can, two entrances. There's an accessible, handicapped accessible entrance from the side of the public library, which is basically this side of the building. And then there also is an entrance.
I don't really know.
On this side, on sort of like the, yes.
Oh, so...
Yeah. Yeah, so those are the two. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so could you just show us what's going to go there?
So yeah, we're buying this essentially. Is it this whole, this whole thing?
Yeah.
Well, this whole thing, this side, we're turning into all clinical space. We're adding extra exam rooms. Have a total of 15 exam rooms. And then this side is just going to be, basically, it's going to have administrative offices for our admin workers.
Public entrance here with a main entrance here because it's the handicapped accessible entrance. And then we'll take kind of feedback.
Any questions from members of the board?
So just to be clear, so this main hallway that's through here, that's kind of this demarcation line, you're going to have everything over there. And then this...
I can't see.
So basically, sorry. Sorry. This side is not you.
Correct.
One of order.
On the border.
On the border. You're on mute.
Space and much more opportunity to accept more patients, hire more medical providers. But yeah, we're vacating our current space. So but this will be double the space. So it will be...
Right now, we have eight exam rooms, and we'll have 15, which is planned.
So this building is now condominium?
It's an office condominium, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And an office in there, upper floor. They're the top floor.
They're currently in the CSO building. Yeah. On Arch Street.
Yeah. Yeah. But they're going into the building behind the next.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Are you going to have to add more parking spaces? What, you just left it here?
No, we're planning on just using what's there. Yeah, we think there's plenty of parking for our purposes.
Yeah.
Eric, are there any special questions we should be asking that relate to this particular type of special permit?
You're asking the right questions. Parking was a good question.
Yes.
You know, I might ask if there's any additional outside site improvements that can be made?
All the improvements are inside, right? For us?
Yes.
Any other questions from anybody?
Any change to exterior signage?
We would like to add a sign closer to the road, but we know that that probably requires a separate permit. So we haven't investigated that process yet. But after we go to closing and whatnot, we will probably start to do that process.
Yeah, that's through the building construction.
Yeah.
All right. Stay still. All right, I'll open it up to people in the audience. Anybody want to make any comments about this?
We really would like to have.
And you are? And you live?
151 Highland Avenue.
Were you in a butter that was noticed of this? Or you're coming on, you're coming?
World's worst.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you want to say besides that?
It's needed anyhow.
Sandy, you're here, 152 Highland Avenue.
And you also are not in a butter since you're coming here to support us.
Also a supporter.
And you are?
Tricia Kettle, 11 West Ludbrook.
And you're not in a butter that was noticed.
What was the address? Excuse me, sorry.
11 West Ludbrook.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm with Stephanie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephanie, yes. I keep forgetting about the TV soon. Sorry. Yes, Stephanie.
I do, I think first and foremost, Bridge Primary, you have a lot of people who really support what you're doing. I have to say the positive things first. Add in a butter to your current location. I've done quite a bit of research on what is permitted and what is not permitted in One Arch Place. And they're currently operating as non-conforming because through my investigation, no special permit was applied for prior to their occupation of One Arch Place, causing encroachments onto my land by which I had to go purchase items from Home Depot in order to protect my area. One of the employees, and I will not be specific to whom, had left animals parked in the parking lot for several hours barking. We had to call the police department on that one. Medical clinics are not allowed by right in Central Commercial. That's why we're here at the Zoning Board of Appeals so that we have a special permit application by which the abutters are notified and be able to bring up potential concerns. Have we addressed potential parking concerns as this location butts a very busy public library? And do we have enough spaces for the employees and the patient ratio parking guidelines? And I wanted to know if, because they are currently operating as non-conforming in One Arch Place, what enforcement action then happens? Do they get fined because they're not in compliance with the bylaws? Or do they need to come back and apply for a special permit for their current location in the interim until they move to their potential location? And this is nothing against the primary care. We're patients there. We've been, we've been seen there. It's a, absolutely says nothing about the staff there. This is a great primary care facility. And they are currently working really hard to help the people that are there. So that goes without saying. I just had concerns because I'm currently being encroached upon, even to this day, by their signage on rights of way. So I just want to make sure that the parking is completely addressed with the abutters to that property. Thank you.
Stephanie, are you in a butter that received notice of this? Or you're just coming as a concerned citizen?
I did not receive notice of this particular issue.
Okay, you're not in a butter 300 feet from the site?
I'm in a butter of the current location of operation, yes. But not of current 55.
Okay, thank you.
You guys are tenants at One Arch Place, correct? You do not own the building?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mark, Mr. Building Inspector, is there anything in your files that's a formal complaint against this medical office in Arch Place?
I would have to research that.
Okay. But it's fair to say that there's nothing before us about any complaint. Okay. How long are you going to take to move from where you are to where you're going to be?
I mean, we're hoping to be in there early 2025. So winter 2025. This just sort of depends on the construction timeline. But between January and March of 2025, ideal.
So it seems that there's something to be said for the fact that if you are in there without a special permit, that that does violate the zoning. Just, you're here for a special permit. You're in the same zone. So it's not up to me or the zoning board at this time because nobody's before us about that. But she's not incorrect.
No, she's correct. Sorry, can I speak about?
Of course.
She is correct. We have investigated this in detail. There are other medical offices in 55 Federal Street. And it, from our research, it seems like the city has really not held medical offices accountable recently. And we even applied for a business certificate when we first moved into Arch Place. And we were not asked to apply for any special permit. And we were concerned about the fact that nobody, none of the other medical practices in 55 Federal Street do have the special permit because it concerns us as future owners of the building. And we were sort of told, I believe, by, was it Mark? No, Eric. By Eric that the city sort of doesn't have the resources to, you know, hold places accountable for whatever happened in the past. So we're trying to follow all the current guidelines, but the city never, you know, held us accountable.
You're protecting it.
Yeah. Exactly. But the city has not held us or other medical practices accountable in past situations, similar situations. So...
So in the Central Commercial, there is no, there's no parking requirement? Do you have, do you have any idea how many cars per hour might be using up space around that building, which has, from my memory, ample parking? But I don't know if everybody's using a lot of spaces. So you have any idea?
There certainly is more space at the 55 Federal than there is at Arch Place. We see approximately four, let's see, depending on the day of how many riders we have, like in a day, probably between like 40 and 60 people a day coming in and out. And so if you divide that over the course of like nine hours, that's like, you know...
Well, plus the people that work there.
Plus the people that work there. Yeah.
Now, does your building have any restrictions on parking about how many parking spaces are available to any of the people who...
Our current building?
Your, the federal, the building. They say to you, you know, you get 10 spaces or you can use any of the spaces or how's that work?
They did say that we would have 12 reserve spaces just for our...
Peeps.
Our people, which will likely, we haven't determined how we'll use those. But ultimately, that'll be reserved just for our business. But ultimately, our business and all the businesses in the building will be allowed to park in any of the lots on by the building.
No. You're inviting the public to come.
Nope, no restriction.
Any other questions?
Do we want to close public comments?
Any more public comment? All right, I'll close the public. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Of course. Please hit your name, address. I know who you are, but for the record.
Not everybody does.
I'm telling you, the 19 Arch Street, the one home I'm hiding to one setting, is I am very familiar with that parking lot that's closer to the library. I can vouch. I know that there are employees in the local pieces that will park in that parking lot that potentially also need having permit from the town for parking permits. So there could potentially be an issue with your parking as far as people using that, that shouldn't be because they're not there for your medical services.
Are you a doctor or not? I don't think you're a self-styled doctor, so I'm just talking. I am, yeah, I am a doctor. People think you're my son.
People think you're, people think you're my father.
Nice to hear some video. Never. Only been asked about 100 times, yeah.
I had to meet up. Blah, my son. I don't have to excuse myself. I like your name, though.
Yours too, yeah. We had to back those in the rest.
Closing the public. I think we've got everything we need. All right, so the way it works is we have three matters on.
Do you want to read the public's piece?
Sure. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm going to also close the public here. So at this point, unless you want to say something that you think is really, really important, we're done with the talking. She's going to read into the record responses from the town.
The only last thing to address from Stephanie's comment is that we were renting extra parking spaces for our employees that were rented by another individual. And we were renters. We have no idea what happened. It was sort of like the land dispute between them and Stephanie. But everything we've done is just based on sort of like renting currently from other owners. So it's not our intention to create any parking difficulties.
Just one comment. Microsoft Building Inspector.
Thank you.
The city. I would just say to the board, grant a special permit. One of the conditions being placed on is that any permits for construction work be obtained prior to the work being in it.
Perfect. Clerk Pro Temp. Read what you have into the record from departments in Greenfield.
Certainly. From the Fire Prevention Officer in relation to this, sorry, just lost words for a second. This application, they have no comments or issues with the proposed project. The Engineering Superintendent also for this project, no comments or issues. From the, from Eric Torre, the Director of Planning and Development, he comments in regards to the location at 55 Federal Street. Assessors map 56, lots 11, units 210, 220, 225, 250, 290. The above referenced parcels located within the central zoning, Central Commercial zoning district and properties to the north, south, and west are also located in Central Commercial and properties to the Easter Zone Semi-Residential. The use, the proposed use, which is of medical center clinic, including accessory research, is a use allowed by special permit with a site plan review and approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals within the CC district. Parking, off-street parking, is not required within the CC district. The board should inquire on the number of parking spaces dedicated for the medical center clinic to ensure that parking will not be an issue for patients and employees. Dimensional requirements and setbacks, no exterior improvements proposed for this project. And for lighting, there are three existing light poles in the parking areas, and no new light poles are being... Poles are being proposed and signage. And they have not, the applicant has not submitted any details on the signage for the facility. Any proposed signage above and beyond the maximum requirements of the zoning ordinance shall require a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I believe we've actually discussed all of those points. Several lighting. We can pick a balance. And that's all of the...
Lighting isn't an issue here because it's inside, right? I'll take this back for the file. Thank you.
Next one, moving to the first break.
Okay, so we have two other matters. We, after we're done with that, we then probably take a little break. And then we will take the matters up. In this case, I think we'll take your matter up first. Well, you're up first anyway. And that may not happen for a little while. So it's up to you. You can wait here for us. We're probably going to be a little while. So if you wanted to go out and take a break and come back, you could do that too because these two things will probably stimulate discussion. And then we probably will let you know tonight our decision. And so that's, it's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to come back. It's, we're now to 10 minutes.
Like 7:30, I think, would be safe.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Peter never answered me. Okay, hey.
Yep.
All right, so for the next, until Peter gets here, for the next two matters, it's the four of us. Because it has to be continuity. All right, so Madam, Clerk Pro Temp, would you read the next application?
Certainly. This is continued from June 13th, 2024. Application of 15 Arch Street LLC for property located at 15 Arch Street, assessors map 69, lot 74, which is located in the General Industry GI zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.11(c)(18), 200-7.17, 200-8.3, and 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the additional use of marijuana product manufacturing to the existing use of marijuana cultivation at this location.
And the parties for that are here. It's your turn. Well. I did, but it's really appropriate for you to say it to the record. Before you begin, though, under Massachusetts law, this is a proceeding that's being continued. It's not initial. I can't invite Eric into the proceedings at this point because he wasn't, although...
I was here, but I was not...
Were you here for all of it?
Yes.
He's been following.
So what's the rule with that?
He actually was here and witnessed all of it. And you can move him up as opposed to them.
You've heard all of it, right, from day?
I've been here for the whole thing.
Yeah, I don't think he's supposed to mean it.
No. Well, I don't mean that, but I didn't... Okay, so...
Not from the very start.
All right, so I'm going to elevate you. So sitting on this panel are...
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
Jim Winn.
David Singer.
Eric Green.
You have any problem with that?[1483.38]
No.
Okay, so go ahead.
Fifteen Arch LLC is seeking to withdraw its application.
Now, do you understand how the law works in Massachusetts with respect to that?
I do.
And you understand that it would be up to us to decide whether you can withdraw? That you have gotten far enough into the process that we could actually decide either to deny your application or to approve your application with conditions, or we can accept your request. I understand that.
So be it.
Okay. You have anything, uh, by the way, has anything happened between you and the neighbors that we discussed last time in terms of doing sound tests or seeking remedies?
No.
And why is that?
Snowballing costs, delays, everything else. We started this process back in November, it's now been nine months. Uh, to basically have a new use that has been changed, nothing to do with the outside, it's not going to intensify anything.
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand, it's been nine months since you.
Since we began this process, we had to.
This special permit process.
No, not the process of trying to get this application to this new use.
And, and so what does that, what, so, and therefore, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
No, neither makes any sense in the business, from a business.
To, to mitigate, you mean?
No, to go forward with the, the.
Oh, we're talking about the special.
Manufacturing.
Okay. Manufacturing piece, okay.
Yeah, the, the market has, in the last nine months, has, has changed drastically.
Okay.
So has our business model, we've, you know, we've made partnerships and collaborations and pursued other avenues and the snowballing costs of trying to make everyone happy and comply with a, some sort of regulation that doesn't exist, you know, just.
What's the regulation that doesn't exist?
Well, so we're, we're not, we're not in violation according to the building inspector, according to this, but the.
That's not the.
I understand, but, but the point is, is we came in here and we, we saw, we saw an additional use. That was not intensifying anything that we're currently doing. And then it became an issue of trying to essentially solve a problem that exists on, on one side of the, the curtain, right? And it's now looking like it's not worth the time or the money because it's essentially going to cost us in the tens of thousands of dollars, plus another probably six to, to nine months to get this whole thing sorted out. And it's not a not a prudent financial decision.
Okay. Any questions of any of the members of the panel?
What of all your compressors that are running right now, they could be shut down, continue that are making noise?
No, no, that's our cultivation facility, that, that's, that's solely cultivation. Those compressors are for our cultivation operation, they have nothing to do with, anything to do on the manufacturing site.
That's the next matter. Any other questions?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And we'll again, we'll make the decision after we, as we decide everything, we'll decide then. Okay, uh, Adam clerk pro temp. Next application, oh, we can't, is it?
Yeah.
Two minutes, two minutes.
I say, well, in technical speaking, do we not need to provide, close it or, or provide an opportunity to the public to speak? I just, I just want to make sure we're doing.
Anybody here want to speak from the public about this? Yes.
Marilyn Griswold, forty-six Hasting Street. I'm confused about if he's withdrawing the application, why he would consider an option of approving or disapproving that if he's withdrawing it.
Because we have the option.
Okay. That's just the way it is.
Just the way it is. Anybody else from the public want to speak?
Yeah, I don't see anybody on the board.
Anybody on the board want to speak? All right, so I'm going to close, I'm going to close all aspects of this matter and we'll decide what's going to happen tonight. We get into the decision portion of the.
And I don't have any correspondence from anyone.
I think all that's been, that's the record.
Yeah, there's just, there's no new correspondence, how's that?
Yep. No more correspondence. All right, seven o'clock, go ahead.
All right, so public hearing C. Application of Michelle and Richard Olsarski for property located at fifteen Arch Street, Assessor's Map sixty-nine lot seventy-four, which is located in the general industry GI zoning district for the appeal of a vote from March snow inspector buildings dated March seventh, twenty twenty-four, relative to noise issues at fifteen Arch Street, and this is continued from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, Michelle and Richard, you want to come up here and tell us what's transpired since our last meeting?
I'm Richard Olsarski, the nineteen Arch Street.
I'm Michelle Olsarski, nineteen Arch Street.
From the, I believe, the original meeting that we had with people. It was in March. You told us, or asked us to meet with the neighbor and to discuss, which we did, and we asked. But we met and then we discussed after and we asked our neighbor about getting, that we don't want to continue to keep, you know, trying to not solve the problem, want to solve it for them and us, so that we can have, enjoy our yard, our house. And we asked at the last, or we, I thought we agreed that they would get a
A sound study.
A sound study. And since then, we have not heard anything in two months.
So I went by there today, is that, is the noise that was there today, is that the noise that is disturbing?
It's when it's below forty degrees.
Well, it's the noise when they run, it, because it filters into our yard, filters into our house, if we have doors open to try to get, you know, enjoy the air when the weather is better.
So when it's humid like this, it is very loud and you can feel it.
So the noise at five o'clock today, is that the noise that you are hearing that's disturbing?
It runs all day.
Yeah.
It runs.
There's noises that are louder than that? And that is still exists?
It's only.
Only in the winter?
It's.
Or where the temperature goes.
It's the temperature because those, the way the units are operating or run, it's just when they get to that below forty degrees, it creates.
And when's the most recent time you turned that clock?
Whenever it was below forty, when it was forty degrees, so.
It's.
Could have been April, could have been March.
But since then, no.
Correct, because we're in the summertime. It's an issue during colder months.
Any, any questions from the
I mean, I do have one question, I think it's more so about the whole process that we've gone through, since I submitted however many numerous emails to Mark in that area, is reading some of the stuff under Massachusetts state law and environmental protection, it's a board of health issue. So I'm trying to figure out why the building inspector, when it really should have been a board of health.
Well, we did issue a special permit and we do have jurisdiction over some of it, so we came to the right place for that. But there might be other remedies for you, that, that may be truth.
And then my, sorry, my only other question is because he's withdrawn, is, you know, essentially is wanting to withdraw, that kind of, I don't know what that does.
Well, it means that, um, well, we have, we have to make a decision about whether to accept the withdrawal or not. If we were to accept the withdrawal, it would mean that we couldn't impose new conditions on the property because there wouldn't be a special permit to do that. But it doesn't mean that we can't still look at the current special permit and decide what to do.
A little. Because if I remember correctly, in the original special permit, if we wanted to make the decision to have them put up a fence, we could go that route, correct?
Well, that could be something that, I, I intend to clarify that when we make the decision about your appeal, but to help you, I, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, I think the board members would agree that you were given the right to ask for offense, you could waive that right if you so generously chose to.
Which we did at that time.
Right, but you could reestablish that right at any time.
Well, we were, when we were told at the time it would be a chain length fence.
I understand what they offered, but you have the right, I mean, that's, that's, that's something that is more in the weeds of it, but yes, you have the right task for offense and we can, you know, when we go through our deliberations, we'll discuss that aspect of it.
Yeah, I do have one question for fifteen Arch Street as in the applicant.
Why don't you ask me and see if you can, see if you can hear.
Um, the recent maintenance that you did on that second unit, what was that for? Was there a change of fan blades?
Four one days.
Okay.
So the motor in that was changed back.
Okay.
So you had to get a new motor. So it was running on like seventy-five percent capacity. Temporary motor and temporary fan blades, so I'm going to take around the inside.
Yeah, we just.
The fan blades were only seventy-five percent size that they needed to be, so the exterior had to be sealed off. So the air was coming in and then we got the actual replaced.
I was just curious because we saw the work, I was curious, I think if.
Anybody else, so I'll open it up to the public, anybody want to say anything, do you want to say anything? Go ahead, Mary.
Mary Griswold, forty-six Hasting Street, I just want to speak in support of residents' desire for comfortable, quiet life in their home. And I, I don't know all the background of this, it's not clear to me how this permit was given in the first place without more conditions, but I just am in support of their appeal.
Thank you. Mark, anything to add? Eric? Any, anybody? All right, I'm going to close this matter, we're going to decide tonight what to do. I'm going to close the hearing. Close the matter for deliberation, that, that work for you? All right, so we're at that point, do we need a break? I look good.
Um, I'm good, but we did tell the people to come back at seven thirty and it's only seven after seven.
But they'll be happy. I mean, if you don't want to start with that, we can start with another matter.
I mean, do, well, I don't know how long of the deliberate, I don't want to delay them if they're coming back at seven thirty, so I guess we just start discussing this, the.
So I'm, I'm feeling like, I'm feeling like the, the appeal, I'd like to discuss the appeal first to see how we feel about uh, whether there's any remedies for them in the current special permit, earning process, and then go to the whether or not we want to allow the withdrawal of the other special permit, because gives us more options, I think, to decide how we're going to proceed. Is that work for everybody? Just to change of order, it doesn't mean we're not going to thoroughly discuss. All right, so, um, let's get right to it. You want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay. I tried really hard to get the parties to come to some sort of agreement because I did, be in this position, or us to be in this position. But I do think that my general feeling is that fifteen Arch Street LLC has violated the special permit. So that's what I'd like to find, and we would have to have a discussion about how to get there, but I don't think, I, I was, I sat for that meeting. I heard what was said and we had no indication that this noise trouble was going to be part of their, what they were going to build there. And I think the neighbors have a right to live in peace and if they had represented us, they were going to have an industrial size air compressor, then we probably would have made a more strict condition for relative to noise. I wish Peter was here because he would be helpful, but at this point, we're not, we're only talking about the appeal. So I sent you some materials about state law. Two of them relate to this appeal, one is that if you, if you read what the powers of the zoning board are, we have some pretty broad powers on these appeals to decide what to do. The appeal came through narrowly as a violation of the standard in the in our zoning ordinance, there's a standard about noise being a certain distance from the boundary, doesn't work here because the Olsarskis live in industrial zone as well, so the noise is, it, it takes a hundred and thirty or forty feet before they could be violated and they're very close and that's not going to work, so their, their, their technical appeal is around that. But based on the statute, um, I believe we have the power to amend, modify, change, sort of step in the shoes of the building inspector and decide what's going on here, so I want you to feel comfortable that we can do that, we're not, we're not bound by just the appeal that they made technically on the noise issue. And the reason for it is my point, not the itself. So when asked by Peter, what was, what the compressors were, they were told, we were told that they were not going to be noisy and that they were going to be residential size. I mean, unless the applicant can tell me otherwise, these compressors are not residential size, they've, it's been admitted in the hearings that they are uh, industrial size. And they're bigger and noisier than anticipated, plus they're defective, so, um, so I think that where I, where, where I would like to go is that it's a, what, what's there is a material change from the application and what was represented. And the remedy, I would say, would be either they, well, they're not going to do this and I don't blame them for not doing it, putting in residential compressors, but they're not going to do that because that's not what they intended, but they, they didn't, they didn't, they weren't able to tell us at the meeting properly, so that's on them. Or they have to mitigate, so either, uh, so there has to be some sort of a sound buffer there um, to mitigate it, uh, to mitigate the noise.
You're talking a six foot fence, eight foot fence?
Well, the fence is already built in, I'm talking about covering the compressor. Either that or, or they could come in generally and ask for an amendment to the special permit, and at that point, we can go over with the applicant some ideas that they want to throw in, but at this point, the best idea that's been presented to us is some form of covering of the, of the machines, soundproofing them. Ironically, similar to what aromatic, actually, they were forced to do that, so their, their compressors were, were quieted by that. So if we gave the applicant a chance to come back and amend the, so, so I would say that they're out of compliance, we have to decide what the remedy is for being out of compliance. If they come back in the near future to try to amend the permit to say, well, this is what's in there, so this is what we want to use, then we give us a chance to negotiate a condition that might be acceptable to everybody. So if, if that's, if that's not, if that's not something that the applicant, fifteen Arch Street LLC wants to do, then I would just propose that we, we create a remedy. Which would be to put, to put sound barriers over the compressors. Unless somebody tells, unless, unless you, Mark, have something, a better idea, or somebody can tell us something more specific. But I believe based on the legal opinion that we got and the way that the, that the hearing went down, we certainly learned some lessons from the hearing, but doesn't mean that we weren't told something that didn't end up being true, and so it was incorporated into the spirit of this special permit or the language of the special permit about cross-referencing things, that this is not acceptable, these people don't have to live this way, and that's, that would be my remedy. Uh, we can pare it down and I'll hear from others, but that's, that's where I'm headed. Too waiting to be recognized by the chair. Uh, listen, I'm in agreement with you, to me, this feels very similar to what we were just discussing around aromatic the last time around. If had this information come up during the questioning, during the public hearing, it would have been more explicitly written into the special permit, I think it was the assurance of this will be quiet, this is residential scale. That's, that's the reason that there wasn't anything around size or noise written into the special permit, because that assurance was given during the meeting. I wasn't on the board at that time, but it just seems to me that if the answer was, well, there'll be four larger scale industrial compressor units, questions would have come up with noise mitigation, there's not a doubt in my mind. Uh, so it does feel to me salient and, and just something that we need to be looking at here. Uh, it, it feels like enough to, to kind of want to push for, like, this is what was presented and it's not what's hap, what happened. You would support the appeal? I would.
Yes, Jim. Peter Wolsey asked, this originally came before us, acquired on the location of the air exchange handlers and what the noise level was for them. They responded, the condensers will be located outside of the building, while the air exchange rooms will be located inside the building. The condensers are residential scale and not louder than, quote unquote.
So are you for supporting, do you support the appeal, Jim?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I, I was on the board when we, we did this initially and from, from my perspective, you know, you know, we did ask about that, I, I, I think that, um, you know, I don't know if a decision was made after that, as to what, I think compressor, maybe they came forth, thought it was going to be residential. You know, I want to be cautious of the fact, you know, this is, you know, someone asking, this is their business, they've been doing this for, for a few years and, and, and be, you know, empathetic to that. But I also feel that, um, you know, conversely, the residents, I think, you know, initially waived it thinking, oh, well, they're going to be small, it's not going to be that loud. Why put somebody else to this time and expense when it's not really necessary, we can work it out. And I just feel like after they kind of waived that right, that their, their willingness to go with the spirit and the intent of, of the app, of, of what was trying to happen got lost somewhere between, between their willingness to say, okay, no, and now, so I, I feel like, you know, lessons, you know, some lessons learned here, and I, I do feel as though what's there now is not what was presented when we were here for the board. And so I would be in support of the appeal.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm, I would definitely support the appeal in this case. It's clear from the history that there was a change that took place and after the, after the, uh, the original appeal was granted.
It's immediate.
Clearly changed, was a change of plans, and that change of plan has had a substantial impact upon the neighbors. And I think that means that we need, we need to step in and take steps to protect the neighbors from an unexpected occurrence. And I guess, you know, I'm not sure this is the right place to, to say this, but, um, I'm concerned that whatever conditions we might put in there may or may not actually solve the problem to the neighbors' concerns. And I want to make sure that we leave open an avenue to address this again, if necessary. Because whatever we put in place, whether it be covers over it or a fence around it or, or both, uh, I, I would hope that those would cut down on the noise enough so that it's an acceptable level, but if it's not, then how do we go forward?
Yeah, I think that's the. Okay, so it looks like we're on agreement that we're going to support the appeal. Based on the fact that, um, there is a material, there's a negative material impact of the neighborhood with this noise. And we asked about it specifically, and we were told something different than what's there, so technically, the project is out of compliance with the special permit.
And what's the application?
Sure.
So I'm there to board the society based on subjective opinion of the engineer on residential size, no noise instead of the actual engineering plans that were presented to the board during that.
I, I, I was, I asked Eric if there were actually plans for what you were doing there. And may I ask you this, the plans that you submitted, were they the same as a residential compressor?
What's your definition of research? I know somebody who has a house that has a fifteen ton compressor.
Well, I've given you like three months, if not more, to work this out with your neighbors.
Correct.
I mean, I, I'll remain objective in what I'm about to say, but you haven't done or presented any plan to remediate this issue. And, um, and so we're left with.
Were you remediating special permit to operate?
I know, I.
Exact conditions that we're operating.
That's, yeah, that's your opinion.
We presented claims.
Listen, if, you know, you, you have all your legal remedies, but we're not going to sit here and let an applicant come in and not.
Tell us that we have had no noise that can be heard more than, more than fifty feet away. I, I'm trying to, I offer defense, we're trying to work these people here, I don't understand the decision.
No, I think you do.
No, I don't.
I think you do.
They live in general industrial district, ten feet away from industrial warehouse.
Well, when an applicant comes before us and doesn't give us all the information that we need to condition the property, that's a problem. So.
So that's, that was my question. You feel that the engineering plans provided to the board in our original permit were not sufficient?
Do you have on you the plans that show the compressor and where they were going to be located? And it was, it was in the application that was submitted to the board?
I'd have to go back and look exactly what was in there, but I know for a fact, it's something.
I reviewed the entire official file today. There are no spec sheets on. Air exchange units, air exchange units. There are specs on the odor mitigation units. And there are specs on the backup generator, but no specs. Yeah, open desk, air exchange.
So if the specifications were silent, then the representation at the meeting is what we went with.
Yeah, I, I guess to, to a point, you know. If it was noted somewhere in a hundred page document that it was a commercial. Brained compressor, why wouldn't it be represented when the question was asked to be told it was residential and not loud at all? That, that.
Maybe the engineer that we had considers a telephone unit a residential unit.
Yeah, but that's your agent, not ours. But that was, but your agent represented to us that everything was okay. So that's on you, not on us. If you wanted to, if you wanted your engineer to be more specific, or if you want us to know more about that piece of your project. And we had a right to see it so we could evaluate it.
Darski said that the, that zero decimals is the acceptable noise would be.
I've never heard them say that. And that's not where I'm headed. I'm not headed for, listen, you could say, you could tell me this if you want. There's going to be two, I, I would like to see there'd be two remedies. One is you file an amendment. And you come in and we'll negotiate a condition that everybody is comfortable with. Just like any, just like the original special permit, it'll be now more specific. Or I can ask the building inspector to decide what to do as the building inspector. And our recommendation is that you cover those things with something that buffers the noise. I don't, based on my listening to it with my own ears, that doesn't seem very hard to do. You cut that in half, it would make the quality of their life better. So I don't know why it's taken so long to just present something that's reasonable and do it. So, but it has. So we, we're faced with timelines and we're faced with the fact that it's time to make a decision. You have your remedies if you don't like the decision, or you, or you can cooperate and file an amendment and continue to work with us. I don't think we presented you an appearance that were unreasonable.
And I'm here offering the solution that I originally offered. We'll put fences, we'll build a fence. I mean, we've looked into those units. Those units are tens of thousands of dollars to cover each one of those units. I mean, what's the point in, in mitigating the noise by half when sixty decimals, seven thirty? When it puts us out of business?
I, I can't disagree with that comment, but it's your sloppiness that has us here, not us. So we're trying to work with you. If you're going to tell me that. You know, it's dire and you're going to go out of business, then I'm happy to work with you. But the working with you has to give these people the piece that they're looking for. I don't know if a fence will work. If you, the fence was already in there. So, so if a fence goes up and it works, then that's, then that, then it works. But if it doesn't work, then.
What is this? Is it cutting the decimals in half? No, it's spending thirty thousand dollars on an engineer to figure out where we are and then doing more reporting than just more. I, I understand the board's position. I'm not trying to.
I feel I'm arguing with you. I'm just presenting the fact that this is the position that we're in. We've, I've given you so much time to do something. And it's time to do something, for, it's time for us to do something. And I understand the business thing. We're not trying to drive you out of business. That's not our goal. That's not my intention.
Offer for you. Send thousands of dollars.
I also stated that we, as your neighbor, not want you to have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars. Because I do not want to get in a merry-go-round to be like, oh, that's not going to work. You know, yeah, you might put up a fence and if that doesn't work, all right, you just blew through however much dollars. That's why we proposed this study. So we, as the, we had an idea of what it was. Cause I don't know, are we talking ninety decimals? Are we talking thirty decimals? I have no clue. I'm not a sound engineer. That's what I'm trying to, what we're trying to accomplish. If we had a better idea of what those sound decimals actually are. Yes, I understand that it possibly costs seven dollars. But if we say, okay, put up the fence and it doesn't work. We're back here being cranky at each other and we're back in front of the board again. I'm not trying, we're not trying to be difficult. But. And it's also where this stem from when originals. I mean, it took me to send an email to the mayor to actually finally get some, to get somewhere. That should not have occurred. When I sent that original email, that was in May of twenty twenty-three. Didn't get anywhere until June of, whenever it was in twenty twenty-four. That is what's frustrating.
And show you every correspondence that was in the text piece I responded within the hours to.
Okay, assuming that you did. My understanding was you're going to hire an engineer who's going to come in and tell, and there were going to be sound levels so that they would tell you what they felt comfortable with. And then you, we would remediate based on that. And why did, why didn't that happen?
Because we felt several engineering firms and all of a sudden the cost of a sound site is moving. So I offered them a fence.
Well, the fence is something you have to do.
No.
Yes, it's in the, it's in this. They did not waive it. You read it, it's in English. No, it says, I'll read what it says into the record.
Mister Snow would not give us a building extra ticket to rock into unless that condition was satisfied and we haven't written what you were.
Well, they had two choices. Either they could have waived it at the, this condition may have been waived in writing, but, but from time to time in older in part. Yeah. So that means that they can change their mind.
Sure. I offered fence.
Well, they're trying to change their.
No, I want a thirty thousand dollars sound stuff.
All right, I'm not going to debate with you anymore. We're going to make a decision. Thank you. I hear what you're saying, but we're going to do this on our. You could stay.
I mean, what's the point? I'm sorry, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be competitive. I'm not trying to be, I just don't understand what the noise ordinance says that industrial district. The only requirement is you can't be heard from more than four hundred fifty feet away from the property land.
Well, why don't you, why don't you think what it's like to live in their house and hear it all day long? When you idly told us that, when you idly told us that there was no problem with the thing that's making their life miserable. And by the way, their communication has been since two thousand and twenty-one, not since two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes.
So for two, for how many years they've been living with this noise and there hasn't been any remediation and. And so you're saying that it's all, that we're picking on you.
I'm saying that you're picking.
These people have a right to live in quiet enjoyment of their property.
And have ten feet from an industrial warehouse.
Yes, because the noise.
The permit is being used by, by squatters until we started to come in here.
It's not, it's not the, it's not, it's not, that's not the, that's not the focus of this. The focus is the balance in between your right to be in there and their right to peaceful enjoyment of their property.
And which is the compromise I was trying to reach.
But you didn't reach it.
Because the person that I was trying to negotiate with demanded something that was unreasonable and un, un, impossible from our perspective.
Go ahead.
The last.
So much for closing the hearing.
We had a conversation and he agreed on that and we haven't heard a word.
Agreed on the.
I would look into. He would look into getting a sound check and we haven't, we didn't hear a word in.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna make this official.
You guys can have a sound study though, and you guys can build a fence. Those are options that are open to you.
Do you have anything to add to this about ways that we could remedy this problem based on your experience, Mr. Building Inspector?
No, I think it's a tough situation. It's hard to determine what is the fix for. I understand there's different ideas out there, but I'm not a sound engineer either. Uh, and I think that with a close proximity. Of residential properties to the business. That. I think a sound study should be done. That way you have some. Effective information. Which you can go on. Find solutions to every problem. Other than that, everybody's just guessing. This may work, that may not work. This may work, that may not work. So I think in order to address the situation head on. Sound engineer would be the best to go.
Okay, thank you.
I was under the impression that was going to be brought forth at this sound study.
Yes.
And I was saying that too.
Yeah. But we're running out of time. The appeal has to be decided. Oh, I mean, I guess if we don't do anything, the appeal will be decided, but I'd rather the appeal be decided by us rather than by the fourth. I don't, I, I want to say for the. Oh, yes, Stephanie. You have an idea?
Yes, I was wondering, knowing that the aromatic fillers had gone through a level of testing through mass DEP for some public health. I was wondering if maybe that is an option for both parties to maybe seek remedy through public, the Department of Public Health. So that maybe they have a engineer that can come out and say whether or not those levels are acceptable. In that particular proximity to the business. And if they find that it isn't, then maybe they can present a remedy for them, for the both of them that would satisfy them. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I feel like we talked about remedies a lot, but without our. Issuing an order, nothing seems to be happening. So I feel like we have to issue an order today of some sort and then put it on. The town officials to. To work with the parties to deal with the order. So. We're all in agreement that, so I'm going to make a motion that we agree to. So I forgot, approve the appeal. I'm making, I'd like to make a motion that we, we approve the appeal by Michelle and Richard Ostersky. Based on the appeal, uh, uh, the appeal that was applied for by them. Dated March seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. For the following reasons. One. During the inquiry. At the special permit hearing back in January fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one, the applicant was asked about the location and noise level of the air. The air exchange handlers, which are the source of the appeal. And that a quote from, uh, from that. From the special permit language is as follows, responded that the condensers will be located outside of the building while the air exchange units will be located inside the building. The condensers are residential scale and not loud at all. That's not in fact what happened. And that is not in fact what happened. And it is our opinion that, that the difference between what's there and what was represented is enough to make. The quality of what's happening in the neighborhood next, immediately next door negative rather than positive, which is the decision that we made at the special permit levels. And it's because of that misrepresentation or the fact that the representation said what it said, that we decided what we did. But that's not in fact what, what has happened on the ground. So. Motion is to accept the appeal for those reasons. Anything else that something, anybody wants to add?
You, I, this is my first time.
I said it like.
What, so we, we vote on the appeal and then what about all of this?
Well, I want to, I want to have a second motion. I want to have a second motion for a remedy. I think we can do that. I think the power that I've shown you the board has, we can first decide the appeal and then we'll make a motion to decide how to remedy it, which I think might take a little more conversation. But I want on the record that we are approving the appeal.
Okay.
And the reasons are that what was represented was not what's out there and that, that what's out there is, I think it's in here.
It is not, it's not liking kind to go back to our, to our.
No, 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 no. Oh, so we were not able to reach the proper finding that the use or structure would not adversely impact the adjacent properties, the neighborhood, the city, or the environment. But because of that representation and what's actually happening. We were not able to make that proper decision.
It's German, so you quote the exact section of the ordinance you just read.
The section, oh, law me to?
The section itself, sorry.
Eight point three F?
Eight point three, thank you.
It was a material change. We weren't, where we thought that it would not have a material, uh, would not have an adverse impact. We now know that it does and, and we based it on the representation made by the applicant. So, okay. All right. Any, anything else? Eric, you'll make that motion that we need more.
You're a wizard.
Okay, can I have a second? Second, any discussion? All right. On, on favor say, well, let's do a roll call. Mark, aye.
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 David, aye. It's unanimous. Okay, now the hard part. Like I said, I think. Technically, the property based on our decision is out of compliance. So therefore the building inspector has jurisdiction to deal with the out of compliance nature of it. If the applicant was willing to come and amend the, amend this, for an amendment to the special permit. Uh, then I would, then maybe like what we did with aromatic, we can give the applicant a period of time to file an amendment. Which would be a short period of time. I don't know if that's what we should do, but just to be, continue to be fair with the applicant. Again, I don't, I'm not trying to drive the applicant out of business. If that doesn't happen by this specific period of time, then, then a remedy will be, will be. Framed by either us, which I don't think we have the ability to really do. Or we're going to have to leave it, we're going to have to leave it in the hands of the building inspector. To figure out what to do. So speak if you think that's throwing you under the bus.
I think that the board should. If it comes to that, I believe the board should give. Particular and specific directions on what they wish or feel that the building inspector should do for action.
Okay. So any, so one suggestion made by the building inspectors is to, but this, but if we were to ask for a. A sound study, either it would come from the government or it would come from the applicant unless you're volunteering to do it. And I doubt it. I don't know what your, I mean, you could always do it later, volunteer to do it, but there has to be a sound study and a remedy. Based on, on the sound study, I guess.
And who would be responsible for that and what timeframe and not only responsible for doing it, but who's financially responsible?
Well, the applicant in the first instance would be financially responsible for it.
Sound study.
Exactly, the sound study. And the remedy. Now, the, if, if a fence could provide a remedy, then that's already built in as a remedy. I just don't know whether or not, you know, I'm not, look, if the fence were to make a difference. And the fence can make a difference. If the fence would not make a difference, I don't think a chain link fence would have to be the fence, would have to be a six foot high fence. And if that would make a difference, then that would be great. So I don't know, but that's already in there. And I would suggest that that could be the first thing that's, that's thought about, but go ahead.
Without being. I'm going to say too difficult. Say we take the cheaper room and is there a way that. For each of those sections of units, one we put six foot fence, the other we put an eight foot fence or half taller. What the issue is, is when you think about that side of that side of our house, that above the, that faces the side of the property. It's like a funnel to where our bedroom is. So on our first floor level, because we have some, um, precipitous bushes there, that does help block some of the sound. We're talking about second floor, really the second floor when that's coming through, you know, just, there's no, there's no tree there, there's nothing. So is it possible that we could do a test of, or maybe do this around ones, you know, one section depends on this other size and the other to figure out if that makes a difference? I don't know if that would, that'd be a cheaper potential renting.
Any thoughts?
Again, if you get into.
Decisions.
Trial and error.
Which is wrong thing to do. I would have liked to have seen, you know, given the length, when this was first brought to everyone's attentions. Or, or the owner's attention, it would have been nice to have seen some action in some, some tangible action taken to. You know. To, to put something in, you know. Cause what, you know. I just feel like, you know, it, what we've gotten back is it's, it's too expensive. I don't know how to do that. I, we haven't seen anything tangible. So I, I think the idea of maybe putting, doing something tangible. In and, and, and do something simple to see if that's in the right direction. But in the end, I mean, how are we going to determine it? You know, is it? That it's resolved just therapy then or the sound system?
Right. Yes.
Tangible, like changing your lighting schedule?
Tangible, like changing our lighting schedule to our own financial detriment.
I'm sorry?
Like changing our lighting schedule to our own financial detriment, so there. Instant running.
And then that helped, that, that was towards the sound mitigation?
Yeah, specifically requested. We turned off the light and it grew with some shining.
Okay, I, I don't remember that coming up as a discussion.
Go ahead.
No, I, I, when I, I, I don't wanna hit down this root of back and forth. I really don't wanna do that.
Do you actually look in the town bylaws of the White? It is in violation.
Yeah, I understand.
I, I was just talking about, we go back to May of two thousand and twenty-three in regards to the issue with noise complaint and we are here in July of two thousand and twenty-four. And other than conversation coming back and forth and being before the board, it doesn't appear that anything's been done. You know, there's been comments about the sound, how expensive the sound thing is, but nothing was presented to us saying, you know, I reached out to these three people, these are three quotes I got. This is a financial hardship for me. I'm not sure, I was going with that, I just, I wanna make sure whatever we decide here, we have specific actions, tangible actions and reasonable ones. For both parties.
Yes, this is not my daily life. I mean, right now, I think. A fence is part of the specific order, so an eight foot fence would require a special permit or not because it's a boundary fence?
Eight foot fence would require a. A building.
Special permit. Or building.
And must be set back the distance of the height of the fence.
We can't waive that? Since it's a condition, since it's a condition of a special permit, can we waive it?
The board can't get a special permit.
Can waive.
Can get relieved. Distance. In zone over there.
So is it something I wonder if we could just articulate now or there has to be a presentation of the fence and everything, right?
Fence requires, requirements may be modified by the zoning board of appeals by issuing some special permits.
But the eight foot fence itself doesn't require a special permit? It would be the.
No, it's a building permit and it can have to be set back to hide it, but you could waive that.
You could waive that by special, so it's not allowing the fence for waving the distance. Okay. All right, that's one remedy, but we don't know if it'll work. You don't think it worked?
I don't know what worked is.
Yes, you do.
No, I don't. Is it reduction, reduction of decimals by five percent, ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, a hundred percent, like.
So is that the, is that the problem with all this? That you don't know what they want, so you're just remaining inactive?
Every time they've asked me for something. They wanted that noise reduction. I went in, I said, I'll put a fence in. Six foot wooden fence, right around that.
Six foot fence around the condensers?
Around the condensers, right there from the corner of the building around the thing. That was, that was the solution, it's unacceptable.
Well, again, I think what the building inspector is saying that we don't have any evidence of what would work or not, so we don't wanna waste your money and we don't have been, we don't wanna keep.
So instead of a four thousand dollar fence, we can have fifty thousand dollars sound study. And be, okay. And then the sound study will tell us that it was before that. It's really great.
Aren't there people that would install the fence? For example, that could come and tell everybody what that fence will do in terms of sound mitigation in a empirical way?
Not really, no.
No?
No, they're just putting fence up. They have no clue about what it does, other than block things.
And they might say, oh, this will cut down some noise, but. What, what amount will it, will it be enough?
So we actually have, we actually have the remedy, which is to have a sound expert of some sort. Come out and help us understand how the sound works and what the best way is to relieve that. So that our board can make a balanced decision between the two parts and yet that's not happened. And it hasn't happened. So.
It's an expensive solution.
There's only one way to do it?
I would think not. I, I would think there has to be some other way to, to come up, there has to be some way to. Gather the, gather the, you know, the, the sound thing without it, without it being a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar. I mean, I wouldn't think it would cost that much to hire an expert who has a device, who could stand there and say, this is what the decimal reading is. I can't imagine it takes fifteen thousand dollars if somebody walk out there with a device and determine that.
Yes, sir.
That's not the town study. The sound study would be very complicated. It'd take all background noise. Exactly what the condensers are doing, how they condensing the sounds are vibrating off of neighboring buildings. It's not just sitting there with a decimal reader.
But do we need, so I guess my question is, do we need something that encompassing?
I was just gonna state that if the fence costs four thousand and the sound study is fifteen thousand, why wouldn't you put the fence up, put a condition that says if it doesn't work. It's still ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars less than the sound study.
Is it possible for these guys to just build a few frames with some soundproofing material, put some sandbags on top of them and just see where that gets us? Like, why does this have to be so complicated versus just Jerry rigging something to buffer some sound and see what that does for like eight hundred dollars?
It's like, the cooling fins are on the outside of the unit and the fans have specific air intake and air ex, expulsion. Um, that they have, so they, they make specific, um, if you wanna like make a box around it. There are specific ones that are manufactured by engineering firms that work in the HVAC space and they're, they're extremely expensive.
And so that's what you're saying is extremely expensive, but I guess, so what do they accomplish? That you couldn't just hire somebody to build on their own? I mean, if it's just a matter of distance to allow for air intake. Like what is, what are they doing that can't be done by somebody else cheaper?
Their engineering business. So if we were to build a box frame around it and fill it with foam, we might be destroying the functionality of our machines. And then therefore destroying machines and then therefore destroying, you know.
So their soundproofing would be more permeable to air than just something that was kind of like.
It's a specific device that's specifically manufactured based on the specific.
See, I guess here's what's happening for me is it feels like we keep bouncing back and forth around specifics. So it's kind of like, well, what do you all need to be happy? And they say quieter. And then I hear you saying, well, how much quieter? I'm not gonna do anything until you tell me how much quieter. And then they say, we don't know how much quieter, just quieter. And then you say, well, I don't know what to do about that. And they say, well, we don't know what to do about that. And then we keep having this meeting, having the conversation over and over and over. So at some point, I mean, I'm like, I don't even, did you all ask for a sound study?
We talked about it.
We talked about it, but did you ask for one? I think you asked for the sound study because, because you said, how many decibels do you need it to be to finally be happy? And they said, we have no idea. I, I just feel like we're trying to push all of these solutions that nobody here wants or is asking for and we keep going around and around. Like, what is going on? Is it just me? It's getting weird. Like, I, I just, so it feels to me like if you all were experiencing like some effort. But that might make a huge difference in and of itself. I, I could be going out on a limb here, but it seems to me like some of what you're responding to is this kind of like, well, I don't know what to tell you. And that's why we're here. Have you thought about that? Like that on some level, I hear you saying everything that they say they want, I try to give them.
They want it quieter.
Yeah?
We, we went out, studied the sound with a very, you know, low tech device, an iPhone. Found sixty-five decibels, reported sixty-five decibels, said Google the solution. Six foot wooden fence around the entire thing, offered it to them. They said, we don't know if that would make us happy. We want you to do a sound study. I called engineers, I called engineering firms in Springfield and Boston and Worcester. I was given a sound engineer in New Jersey who said he could have an engineer here, do a whole study and then take all the data and bring it back to New Jersey, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Or blah, only probably about twenty, twenty-five, maybe forty hours, right? And then even give us, you know, some, some solutions. And tried to find a cheaper alternative. I've been looking now for six weeks for a cheaper alternative to a sound study. At which point in time, the entire time this has been going on, we started this whole thing where if on November first. We were just allowed to do this, on November third, we could have had this Ross product. That's simple, how simple is to make it? But now nine months later, the market has changed. We've explored other businesses that haven't, we're gonna try to have something else to it. We're gonna be manufacturing licensing, make the Ross for us and just have a little partnership collaboration, not go through the whole headache. And so. We were gonna allow you to, to decide the appeal. I did not expect. It to go that direction, but now that we're here, my solution and my, my, you know, there, the light that we had, which is part of the light study, which is part of the special permit, which was approved. We had permission for that light to be in there, violation of it. We turned it off completely. After anything against the law was not good enough, we turned it off completely. I'm offering to build a fence.
So what happens for you all if he builds a fence and puts in a good faith effort? Like at what? When are you willing to live with some level of noise? Like, is there any level of noise that can come from this building or does it just need to be graveyard quiet all the time?
The only thing I can say is, first of all, when we, one of our emails to, what's that to? We asked them to come into our house and hear what we hear on our bed. That's the thing. We, we have invested money. We've, we've got two sets of curtains. To try to insulate, insulate the curtains. To try to block the sound. At night, we have to sleep with a radio on to mitigate the sound. We don't know what the, we just want to be able to have our quality of work. So we can enjoy our house, the water, enjoy our yard.
And, and this space is on the second floor, you said? So an eight foot fence is not gonna stop sound from moving to the second floor?
Believe.
All right. And then you said that you've changed your hours of operation so that the compressors aren't running at night, correct?
They do.
Folks, what's going on?
They do run. At night. They don't run. During the day, they run constant. At night, they from seven to seven. They run, but they still do run. Especially with the warmer weather, warmer nights, they run. More at night.
And that, what about the clanking? Has that been remedied?
No.
You expect it to ever be remedied?
Not until the machines are replaced. We looked, that was when I reported in the two weeks ago, three weeks ago, which was, we looked into that train itself. The long term, that's just. Yes, like a soft start. So in order to create a soft start, we would have to generate a sound solution. Apply it home for this chance of basically fixing the machinery already.
You believe that this fence, so you're proposing a fence right against the machines, right? On the units.
On the units, a six foot fence on the units.
Not on the property line.
Literally, literally.
Push something back a bit, yeah, yeah, yeah. Each unit would be surrounded by a fence, square fence?
So where the, where the basement door is, it would come out about eight feet from the wall, right? That faces the roof. And then it would go along the edge of the driveway next to the units, six foot tall, and then there's a little step up and then a six foot tall fence, wooden stockade. Right? And then, you know, if that were still a problem, we could maybe try to put like a one or four on top or something. But that was what I thought was a reasonable. Then we got into the sound study thing for the last several months of trying to find one that we can afford.
So I think I misunderstood this whole fence thing this whole time and thought we were talking on the property line. I didn't realize you're talking about it being right up against the compressors or, you know, surrounding.
That could be worth a try. And follow up with a sound study if it doesn't work.
I mean, that, to me, that feels like a reasonable accommodation and a good faith effort to resolve the problem.
Yeah, but how do we put, so again. If we issue an order, then it's an order. And it's gonna be hard for you to, to move around in that order. Uh, as compared to you moving around before we issue an order.
Via an amendment?
Well, we've, we've already, we've, we've, the appeal has been, um, approved. But, um, I still think we need to decide what the remedy is. And if, if everybody here thinks that trying to put a six foot fence around the compressors. Is something that we should try. And you're willing to do it, then, um, but, um. The hard part is, is that everybody has to be reasonable. So your, your determination that the noise has been mitigated or not needs to be reasonable. And your determination that you've mitigated it has to be reasonable. And, uh, so if, you know, what kind of standards are we gonna set? We're, 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 we're a judicial, you know, we're a quasi judicial group, we're not a, a construction. So I would rather, I would rather not make any decision about it and let them do it. But I'm afraid we're just gonna be back here in a month with the same thing. And I don't know about timeline, we've, we've decided the appeal, but I wanna keep our ability to remedy, to have a remedy too. I think we're right up against the edge, right? Unless everybody agreed to an extension.
Yeah, I think we're at the edge. Time likes.
Is that the one thing to do, you think? You think we should give a firm? You think it's reasonable to let them try to work it out for another thirty days?
If, if you agree, and you know what's gonna be done within that thirty days. If, for instance, if they're going to install a fence, then in thirty days, I think it's reasonable. But if there's no definitive plan to within that thirty days.
Well, that would be.
The accomplished thing.
Right.
Then.
All right, that would.
Yeah, we're not, we don't wanna kick this can anymore down the road.
Is that something that you're willing to, is that something that you're willing to work with the, with our, our street?
So with the proposed remedy, what does that mean? Like.
We wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would be.
What does that mean?
It means that they would go out and put the fence around it as, I, I, I mean, I guess we could have you describe it as detailed as possible. But we would not, we would, if you, if we got a signal from you and you that we can continue this for thirty days. Then, um, we'll continue it and it won't, we'll be within the, we'll be within the timeframe. And you could have the thirty days to figure out what, to, what, to, you can.
The place I had for a fence, I got initial before the April. They were booking in September. I don't know if I go back to them now and say, yeah, we want that fence, but that would be the building in September, whether they're gonna be booked out. I don't wanna say, we'll come back in thirty days and have a solution when all it'll be, will be me calling the fence company being like, hey, is that quote still good and when's your?
Well, there are actually.
If you tell me to build a fence, I'll build a fence as quickly as I can. If you tell me to work with Mark Snow and figure out how to come up with an amendment, I'll work with Mark Snow. I just wanna know what it is that you have more to do.
Well, we can always ask that, that within an X period of time, that he present a contract that shows the expected start date. Some of that to me would show, you know, a good faith effort that, yes, I hired this company and give them this deposit. They've agreed they're gonna start late October. And, and I realize it, 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 it doesn't help them immediately, but I would hope that they would say, okay, yes, some action is going to be taking, taken. And this is what we're going to do. That way we have something tangible.
Don't you think a contractor could install that fence that we're talking about? We're not talking about a boundary fence. We're talking about a fence around a piece of equipment. Couldn't a contractor, contractor's gonna have to put in things to hold the fencing, right? It's not gonna go in the.
It has to go, it has to go in the driveway, so it's being driven.
Yeah, but, but can't, can't a contractor do that? Can't you buy the pieces from the fence company and hire a contractor to put the fence in?
Well, that's the part. That's the problem. I mean, I don't know if we've had to try to hire a contractor recently. They are months and months out. Even, he could call every contractor in the book and they're all gonna tell him, October, November, December, spring of twenty twenty-five.
It's not gonna happen.
That's why I'm being thirty days.
The good news is.
Right. So that's why I'm saying a contract say with a good faith that he's actually hired somebody and has a contract that they're going to do the work at X time. And then that way you've got, you know, and then the contract can't be canceled, you know, we just, we, that would be his good faith in thirty days. I think that's a reasonable thing to do in thirty days. I think it's unreasonable to expect some, he's gonna have somebody hired a fence built in thirty days. That's just not gonna happen. I think it's unreasonable to expect some, he's gonna have somebody hired a fence built in thirty days. That's just not gonna happen.
I do like the idea of the eight-foot fence versus six-foot fence.
Eight-foot around the machines?
Cause it gives you a little more height. I think that's what you said, you, you got a quote from eight foot?
Uh, six foot, but yeah.
Oh.
I figured six foot. We could do eight, it's fine.
The only reason is it gets a little bit higher in funnels sounding.
For our benefit, that's, that's why we, we don't know the answer.
But this one, we have to do something.
Yeah.
Other than just saying, I don't know what, you know.
But we've been sitting here for fourteen months from our first request.
Right, but you've been, but, I, we, I, and I've, I've acknowledged that, but you're before us now, and I think we have, I think we have been very attentive. So let's continue to work in that, in that thing. I understand your frustration, that's, I, I, I acknowledge it, but. Um, so what do you suggest? So are we, so would, would you both agree to continue this for another thirty days?
So these are votes already gone, yes, yes.
I don't think we voted.
No, I'm, I'm gonna vote. If they, if, if we don't, if, if you don't, if you don't extend the dates, then I'm, I'm gonna ask the board to make a decision of our own.
So the only other piece I'd want in this remedy is to whatever the plan is going forward, that is put in writing, and we see what that plan is.
Alright, let's, fuck it. So eight-foot fence.
In other words, with what's being written on, so it's in black and white, so we don't have to.
Surrounding the compressors.
And I.
That fence on all sides of the compressors?
So, right now, we're looking at an L. That's the, that's what we get. Because if you can get around behind you, get around behind, that's just.
Well, if we continue this, we can. So.
Okay. So it sounds like within thirty days, you would present them and us with a proposal. That's in line, a written proposal that shows a, a date certain, which would place a fence around the compressors in an L, and the L, I guess, would be, so if I'm on their backyard looking at it, it'd come like this, or it goes like this?
I didn't understand any of this.
So the driveway, it's along the driveway, which side of it?
This is their house, this is the driveway, it comes off the building, and it goes up along.
And, and would.
It blocks the noise going towards Deborah Ross's house.
Yep, right, but how does it, how does it pin in, how does it pin?
It would be open.
All, all open, or the building, is there a building jut there that?
The building comes straight up, and it comes out.
And you, and, and why wouldn't you close it in at the top part?
Cause we don't mind if it moves face towards us. And maybe we need to get into work.
But you got a fence there, I mean, a gate there.
We can have a gate, but there's no.
There's something that.
Save us money, we don't need a fence.
So, so basically, it would come out here, up here, eight feet high.
Yeah, so along the edge of the concrete, so the poles would come up, and then the fence would start along the base of the concrete, flat there, jet up, flat along here, past the, past the concrete to about there.
I, I, I would think that would be better to leave it open, cause I would think that if sound bounces around, better to have it bouncing, to have a way to get out as opposed to it all going up. If you block that up, all of it's gonna just down and go up, I would think.
It's a start.
One thing have to be conscious of is there is a fire department connection there for the sprinkler system. So, you know, I'm gonna be able to block that off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll definitely.
Can they come in from, can they come in from the side, or they have to be able to come in from the front?
I can answer for the fire department. Typically, it would be from the most direct street.
And then we'll put it, then, we'll put a gate, we'll put something there that will, uh, allow them to do that.
They're showing us the most direct.
So where, where are we here?
So I think we're trying to allow them time to present a plan for the fence, so everyone can see what it looks like and where it's gonna be located, what its dimensions are.
And that way, you, you, you believe you could do that within thirty days?
Give you a plan?
Yeah. Well, and have, have somebody tied, lined up to do it?
I have five, I have five quotes, but yeah.
And, and you folks? It would still leave open other options. We're not closing out anything. We're just hoping to discuss it without us ordering what to do. I don't know that that's the case. So let's try it. Well, is it okay to go and? You have to live with this, with being, I'd like to have, I'd like to have him, uh, set a date. Can you, can they come in and talk to you about this, or could it come back to us?
Could come back to you.
The September meeting is September twelfth.
Yep.
And the August eighth meeting discussed it.
Yeah, it was, we were, well, I was trying to, I was trying to be helpful, even though I didn't wanna have a meeting in August. We don't have anything else on the agenda. Thank you. Is this something that I could deal with administratively?
I would recommend the whole board.
But we could pick a date. You're gone the whole month of August, or just the week of our?
Available that for two other.
That second thirty, the second Thursday.
On the state.
Well, why don't we do the third Thursday? And we'll, we'll meet, we'll, I'll. I would do that. Everybody else feel okay with that?
So we meet the fifteen.
Is that the day? Is that the third Thursday?
That's the third Thursday.
Eric, is that okay?
Maybe August fifteenth?
So that'd be for the purpose of us meeting with the three of you to show us what they're gonna, you're gonna show us your, your stuff, and then they're gonna.
Just, just so I'm clear, I'm gonna have an eight-foot wooden fence.
Yep.
To society.
For now, that's the, yes.
As early as possible, it's all.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, uh, under contract.
Is wooden stockade okay with you?
Wooden stockade? I think that would work. I mean, it would have to be maintained, so we could put that into the, uh, into the end result. You'd be under contract at that point to have a date certain. Paint daisies on, that's.
That's a personal choice, I don't like that.
I would put peace signs on it, but that's.
Yes. One last thing, one thing I would caution is, is when you enclose that area for, make sure that it's within the manufacturer's specifications.
That's why it's gotta come out into the driveway. Because there's, there needs to be eighteen inches between the, the fan, the fins or the cooling fins or the exterior machine there. So, yeah, that's.
Just, you just make sure it's within the manufacturer's specifications.
Yeah, but we've already talked to the H M company.
And, and because of the size being eight feet, does that mean you, it needs the building inspector's approval or not?
It would need to be a.
Building permit, and that's when you'll deal with the fire and the, the, the?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the fire.
I mean, I hope there could be at least something where it could be open and closed, so it's not an opening. That would kinda kill the whole thing, right? If we had to have a space there, so.
You know, the fire connection is above, up the street or up the driveway from the end of the compressors.
He showed it as being behind. But it's not behind the compressors. I can, if you pull that picture back out. Essentially, what I'm saying is you can have the fence be contiguous and not block.
There's the, there's the sign right here. Typically, the sign in the right.
Oh, yeah, no, you're actually, you're actually right about that, actually.
So does everybody feel like we have something that's clear? Eric, do you think what we're asking has been clear? You could submit it to the meeting. We don't need a motion for this, except I wanna make a motion to.
You, if you accept the, the extension, you continue to.
Right, people clearly have free access.
Okay, so for purposes of what we're gonna do next, is, I wanna hear, so each of the parties to this, uh, matter, both the appellant and the appellee agree to extend the date, the dates, the date of this process voluntarily to August fifteenth, at which time the board will be presented with a plan showing the fence installation as we've just discussed, a contract to do it, and hopefully, and a date certain of when it's gonna be done.
Fine by us.
Fine by you? Okay, R Street said yes, Yodarski's nodding, say yes, yes? Okay, then, um, I make a motion that we continue this matter, and I'll, I'll, cause I'll say continue the hearing since we're all talking. Uh, continue the matter till, the hearing until, uh, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the approval of all the parties.
I'll second that.
Uh, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. In the spirit of who we are in Greenfield, I'd like to make a, on the next matter, which is the request to withdraw the special permit. Thanks, thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, applicant be allowed to withdraw their application for the special permit.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
Can we continue that as well?
Yes. Is that, that would be enough time, cause that's a special permit, right? It would, well, um, that would be your agreement, so you're, 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 you're okay with extending it to that time, so, okay. Make a motion to extend the time for, uh, deciding whether to accept the, whether to, uh, decide to withdraw, or whatever other decisions we're gonna make about the special permit application of fifteen R Street LLC, uh, what's the date of that?
I'll second that motion.
Until August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah.
I was looking for the date of the application, but.
Okay, it was dated March.
No, that's.
Oh, that's the other one, nevermind, sorry.
Alright, um, roll call?
Hi, was there a second, Mr.?
I seconded, yeah.
Oh, and for the record, the applicant has said that he is in favor of the extension, or the LLC is in favor of the extension. Aye, Betty?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you, thanks, Mr. Thank you. I knew it would be better if you did. Um.
Well done, David.
Oh, sweet. David, can we take a, two minutes break? He's so upset.
I'll give you three, is this gonna take that long, right? This is the last speech?
Yeah, yeah, okay, let's just, let's do it. Yeah, yeah, I agree. Back it up.
It's freezing.
Seriously. Mark, it's falling right on you. It comes right on a fire, well, whatever.
We also, we also need to, you know, be fair, and, and there are lawful, but there are constraints for us as well, so. Let's see how this goes, alright?
We, we talked with the board, but we suggested to ask them.
Good, well.
But we don't want.
Okay, well, you're being, you're being, you're being good about it, thank you.
Well, and we appreciate your help, and I, I believe Jenny was on, but, um, you know, I know she's up those two, so I appreciate.
The board's help.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Solution.
Hi, thank your help.
Good night.
Where's my, uh, where's my son?
He had to go home. You take care of your grandson.
Take care of my grandson?
It's a boy.
With?
Yeah, two Ts.
Wit singer.
Okay, let's hear a motion on their application. Let somebody else do. Somebody else make the motion.
Well, are there any conditions?
To make a motion, subject to the following conditions, and then we add the condition.
You're assuming we're gonna all them two?
No, no, we could say no. They just have to make a motion. Don't scare them, but that's, the motion has nothing to do with the decision.
It's real law, okay.
I'll move to accept the application of Greenfield Primary Care Doing Businesses Bridge Primary for the property located fifty-five Federal Street. Do I have to read this whole thing?
You do, and, and can we start, can we start again?
Yeah.
Prove the motion.
I approve the application. I move to approve the application of Greenfield Primary Care D V A Bridge Primary for property located at fifty-five Federal Street, units two ten, two twenty, two twenty-five, two fifty, and two ninety, it says it's map fifty-six, lot eleven, units two ten, two twenty, two twenty-five, two fifty, and two ninety, which is located in the Central Commercial C C zoning district, for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four seven, C seven, two hundred dash eight three, and two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning ordinance, in order to allow for a medical center clinic at this location.
With the following.
With the following conditions, alright. I have a general condition that I'm glad we now put in the special permits, uh, right, Eric?
Yeah.
But that's my last thing. Are there any other specific conditions? Oh, well, Mark had a, Mark had a condition, right, but that.
Building permits be obtained prior to start of construction.
Yes.
Isn't that like the law vote? Do we actually have to impose special conditions with the law?
You know what? That's the point of the law.
I would say it's words, let's just throw them in. There's no harm in throwing it in.
We were gonna do that anyway. It's not a problem.
We're trying to, we're trying to be better as the appellate, as the board of appeals.
Alright, so condition one is, again, Deb, that, can you read it into the record?
Sure, any permits for construction be obtained before work begins. I think the before word was.
Got it.
The part that he liked to stress.
And that also means that the special permit shows that the applicant is on notice to do it. You know, it's not like, oh, I didn't know we had to do that, so that's a good thing to put in. Any other special?
Any signage has to come back before.
Any signage, or?
No, only if it's extended, extended to the ordinance. If they follow the ordinance, then that doesn't have to come back, it's simple.
You wanna put signage on the side of the building? Is that what you're looking to do, to show that you're there, or put it on the window or something like that?
Definitely that. But I think they were thinking about it.
So you would go through the building inspector, if it was too big, you'd come to us for that.
Okay.
So.
Yep, alright.
Thank you, Jim, now that's, that's a good.
Yeah.
But that one, we don't wanna restrict, we wanna make it that it's open-ended, so that by not saying anything, we give them more flexibility, okay?
Um, we do wanna add that, um, as per the plans show, there will be no external improvements, and if this change, another, they'll need to come back.
Good one.
Yeah.
Nothing else? Here's mine. The applicant shall, this is gonna be our, the applicant shall adhere to and comply with the submitted plan and application materials, including representations made at this hearing related to this special permit.
Oof. Yes, they said it's already ready to.
Sure.
We're gonna wanna copy.
This is gonna become. Eric, I would put that at the bottom of your boilerplate, because I think we're throwing that into the special.
Is this for special permit B day?
The applicant shall, well, we've had three appeals, so.
Oh, okay.
The applicant shall adhere to and comply with the submitted plans and application materials, including representations made at this hearing related to this special permit.
The spirit of the law is no one.
You weren't listening to what was going on here before, but that's why.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so that's the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, or a roll call vote? Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
David, yes, it's unanimous.
Yay, yay.
Before you go, I don't think this will happen, but under our laws, um, Eric will type up the decision and we will sign it. It would then be submitted to the town clerk, which is an official, uh, action. And it starts a time period where anyone who even, you know, anybody in town who thinks this is a bad idea, or especially abudders who haven't shown up, can appeal this order of law. They have twenty days when it gets filed with the clerk's office.
Okay, okay.
So.
And would we be notified if it wasn't appealed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But the, the point is also that if you were to start work before the appeal period was over, so let's assume that this thing will be signed like early next week or then, um, you do that at your own risk, if somebody were to appeal it and then be successful, you, you would be, and you couldn't be able to sue the community for your going ahead and doing that. Even though you do have the permission. Even though you do have the permission, you're taking a risk that it'll be overturned.
Sure, sure. Okay.
All right.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah. We. Both, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, excited about it.
When do you start taking, um, new patients?
We still are, yeah. We're taking patients.
We live right around the corner, so.
Yeah.
Wait for you.
Oh, as soon as, as soon as we move, we're currently open to new patients at our location, so. We have four hundred and twenty.
Now, what about the, what about the building on Federal Street?
What about the?
Isn't there an office on Federal Street, a medical center, or you moved from there?
Dean, Dr. Singer had started, um, at Dr. Foley's office or the. Yeah. Yeah, he had like two rooms there. He had like four hundred. An exam room. Yeah.
And he's the only doctor in the school right now?